I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which is stand one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, please have a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez. Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the council, excuse the absent member.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, we have a proclamation and a special presentation. We're gonna start off with the proclamation.
Hey, proclamation, LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall riots and is generally recognized as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ rights movement. Whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members. And whereas while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas the city of Renton, in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations. And whereas in solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community, the pride flag will appear at Renton City Hall from June 5th through 11th, 2023. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 2023 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in the special observance and recognize the numerous contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals in the city and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Renton to be affixed this fifth day of June 2023. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
As the first openly queer person to be elected to the Renton City Council, I really want to thank you for this proclamation and move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Council President O'Halloran, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, to accept the proclamation, we have a lifelong Renton resident, Lynette Sargent. Lynette is a longtime advocate in education and LGBTQIA+ rights. She's part of the leadership of the administration for the FreeHeart.org, a board member at large for the Renton LGBTQIA+ community and holds a leadership role at the United Christian Church of Renton. Lynette. Yes, yeah, please, come say if you are.
So exciting to be here, by the way. Thank you so much. Thank you and good evening. First, I would like to offer my appreciation to Mayor Pavoni and the members of the Renton City Council for their welcome to this beautiful June evening in honor of pride. Pride is a celebration of life. It's a celebration of community. It's a celebration of just being able to exist. That is doubly so for our LGBTQIA+ Black First Nations, Hispanic, people of color, Asian American, and Pacific Islander communities as well, community members as well. Living in an age of performative cruelty, where in many parts of our country and the wider world, the ability to exist is being criminalized, moments like this are important. They are needed. It is a reminder that pride at its very foundation was a fight for our right to exist. A reminder that we can come together now in community and with each other to celebrate what we have achieved while acknowledging that there's plenty of work left to do. As a representative of the Renton LGBTQIA+ community, I look forward to seeing full equity and inclusion becoming a reality in our vibrantly diverse community. And am honored to accept your proclamation on this day, the 5th of June, 2023. Thank you so much.
Okay, and next up, we have a special presentation, and it's from David Foster. It's our legislative session recap.
Already messed up. There we go. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me tonight. David Foster, a contract lobbyist for the city of Renton. First six months in now, attempting to replace Mr. Levy, who you all honored back in December. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. What I've got here is a very brief, high-level PowerPoint just to touch on a few of the different issues that were in play this year. Also, a couple of the funding items specific to the city of Renton. And then obviously happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I will also note that Senator Hasagawa just walked in. So anything that I say that's incorrect, you can ask him and he can fix it for me. Okay, so. Just as a recap, the session began on January 9th. It's a 105-day session, as is always the case in the odd-numbered years. That is because they write the legislature, legislators, right? The two-year budget during that timeframe. They did end, sign and die, on April 23rd on time. However, there was one issue that was outstanding. That was the Blake Decision Fix, the drug possession issue. And so the governor called a special session that began and ended on May 16th. That was also the last day the governor could sign bills from the 2023 session or take action on bills. So the 2023 legislative session, for all intents and purposes, came to an end on May 16th of this year. As I said, the budgets were in play. Operating capital and transportation budgets were all completed on time with a bipartisan majority. And for the first time in the last couple of years due to COVID, the legislature was back in person, fully in person. Although legislators and committees were able to take meetings and testimony virtually, and members were allowed to vote virtually if there was an illness or cause to be away. In the House, controlled by the Democrats, 58-40. Forty Republicans in the Senate, it's 29 to 20. We have had some changes since the session ended, or excuse me, some announcements since the session ended. Governor Inslee, of course, announced that he will not be running for a fourth term. The Insurance Commissioner announced he will not be running for what would have been a seventh term. And already, we've seen two statewide elected officials announce for the governor's position. Hillary Franz and Bob Ferguson. We also have now, since this was put together, Senator Mark Mullet, who represents a piece of Renton, has also announced he's gonna run for governor. We have a couple of other senators who have announced for this potentially open positions in the Attorney General's office and Lance Commissioner's office. So we're gonna see a lot of dominos between now. What's amazing is we still have a year, just a shade under a year now, before filing week is complete. So there's gonna be a lot of different dominos over the next year or year and a half, if you will, to the end of the 2024 election cycle. So a couple of the large-issue areas that were in discussion this year. The Blake Decision, as I mentioned, it was passed in special session. Very high level, where things ended up was possession and use would be a, what I'm gonna call a new variation of a gross misdemeanor. For the first two offenses, you could, a person could receive up to 180 days jail time. The third would be 364 days. However, the intent is to move people into treatment to try to make sure anybody that wants it or has access to treatment and in turn not do jail time. That's not supposed to be the way this issue was going to work. The idea is to divert people into treatment and try to treat it as public health. That said, there is the potential for jail time if needed. On the behavioral health front, we continue to see, and it's tied to the Blake Decision, but there's also additional components to it. We continue to see a lot of work going into, and funding, going into behavioral health, the 988 line, 23-hour clinic. That's to allow anybody to access services in a short period of time and be moved into a place or location with additional services. I know the city didn't really talk a lot about firearms, but there were a couple of different bills that passed, and it was an issue that certainly is contentious. So I put it up there just as an item of other issues that are taking place. And of course, housing. A lot of money went into housing. A lot of conversations over zoning related to housing. And I think that's gonna continue probably next year and into the year ahead. One of those bills, you will note, is 1110. That's the one that requires a certain amount of units per lot in basically every city in the state. And for Renton, because the population size is over 75,000, it's, if I recall this correctly, four units per lot and six units per lot within a quarter-mile of a major transit, major transit hub. A few of the issues that, or a few of the funding issues that are coming, or funding that is coming to Renton, that was taken care of in the capital budget. There's one point, almost 1.5, 1.485 million for the Pavilion Public Square. There was, you may recall, there was in previous budgets, 206,000. That was going to the St., slated for the St. Vincent de Paul site. That was shifted to the 300 Rainier Avenue site. There was, there's not 5 million, that's my mistake. There's 500,000 for the Sam Chastain Trail. The idea here, this is something that Representative Burquist was really interested in, to try to put together a plan for if and when a larger amount of dollars become available. And then in one of the grant programs, there's 350,000 for the Calbutia Reservoir. Park Sports, Fork Park Courts. There we go. So pretty good in the capital budget, I would say. I know the request for the Pavilion Building Public Square was a little bit higher, but I think the legislators in the 11th District, specifically in the 5th District as well, did a good job of advocating on your behalf. And then in the transportation budget, we were able to get 750,000 for the Grady Way, Rainier Avenue study to try to figure out what is the best approach to move transit off and on 405, as well as moving the rest of the transportation. So just a reminder, not that you don't know, Senator Hasagawa, Representative Burquist, Representative Hackney are the 11th District legislators. They were all very supportive and instrumental in moving these dollars forward and getting these dollars into the budget and maintaining them in the budget negotiations. So a big thank you to them. I would say that even if Senator Hasagawa was not sitting behind me. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I touched on a couple of the larger issues that I know were of interest to the city, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And actually, just before that, I just wanted to say thank you for all of those, all of you that participated this year in the legislative process. Really appreciate it. Thank you for the help and thank you for the support.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you so much for the presentation. With 1110, is there gonna be any appetite in the future? I know it wasn't dealt with, to deal with the HOA and covenant sections of that legislation.
Good question. I do remember seeing a story in the paper why that was difficult for them, for the legislators. I'm not an attorney. I'm not gonna attempt to describe the issues there. I would not be surprised to see, one, see some additional zoning-related bills come back, and two, to see as this bill goes into effect, 1110 specifically, as cities are dealing with it and governments are dealing with it. I imagine there will be some requested changes. If not next year, then certainly over time. I would also add that AWC really was very active in the housing issues. And they have a, their lobbyists have a difficult job, of course, because there's 281 cities, and trying to make it work for everybody is tough. I would point out, though, that Candace Bach with AWC did ask the legislature on a couple of different occasions, please give some time to start moving, to allow for implementation of these different bills. If we're one issue upon issue upon issue upon issue every year, there's really not enough time to put these into place, see how they work, if it's constantly changing. And so, yes, I think there will be some additional issues that come up, what they are specifically, to the issue that you brought up, Councilmember Prince. I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Council President.
I was curious. It didn't seem in any place in 1110 that spoke to affordable housing.
Kind of recall, Council President, I think you may be right. It really is a sort of a flat zoning issue. I think one of the issues that continues to need work is where will housing come from? If we need the number that's been used as a million units in the next 20 years, how is that gonna be developed? Who's gonna develop it? Do we have even the resources to move forward? And it's not gonna be all state resources by any stretch of imagination, nor should it be city or county resources. It's gotta be private resources. So I think you're right about that. And it's an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let me off easy, I appreciate it.
Yeah. We know where you live.
Recording in progress.
All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Help us kick off Renton Farmers Market 22nd market season by shopping next Tuesday, June 6th, from 3 o'clock to 7 p.m. The market returns to Piazza Park at the corner of South 3rd Street and Logan Avenue South. The market runs each and every Tuesday, except for July 4th through the end of September. Vendors will have fresh flowers, fresh produce, honey, baked goods, ciders, wine and cheese, crafts, and delicious ready-to-eat food. There'll be live entertainment from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. and kids' activities. We welcome back hot food vendors, so grab your dinner to go. We're proud to offer the SNAP Market Match Incentive Program for SNAP and PEBT shoppers, which offers a dollar-for-dollar match up to $25 per day for fresh produce. 10 hours of free parking at the city parking garage, entrance located off South 2nd Street between Burnett and Logan Avenues and just one block north of the market. For the most up-to-date information, please visit RentonFarmersMarket.com or find us on Facebook and Instagram. The pop-up lunch schedule. In addition to lunch, each event will have hygiene kits, socks, and food, where dogs and cats will be available. On Wednesday, June 7th, from noon to 2, it'll be at Liberty Park, 1101 Bronson Way North, sponsored by the SOS Pop-Up, will be held regularly on the 1st and 3rd Wednesday through December 2023. Locations will be rotated throughout the city. On Friday, June 9th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at 126 Logan Avenue North, sponsored by SOS Food Lifeline Pop-Up, will be held regularly every Friday through December. Wednesday, June 14th, from noon to 1:30, 300 Rainier Avenue North, sponsored by the Emergency Feeding Program, SOS. This will be held regularly on the 2nd and 4th Wednesday through December of 2023. Rental Registration Program. Under Renton Municipal Code, landlords are required to register all residential housing properties within the city. Exceptions include room rentals by owner-occupied residential homes, commercial lodging, short-term rentals, state-licensed facilities and housing owned by government groups or housing authorities. For more information about the program, instructions on how to register, or if you are a landlord who is not yet registered and qualify, please visit RentonLaw.gov/rentalregistration. The city's next recycle event will be held Saturday, June 10th, from 10 a.m. until 2 p.m. at Renton Technical College. This event will collect cardboard, tires, styrofoam, and mattresses or box springs. Cash fee is $30 per unit. Non-perishable food will also be collected for the Salvation Army Rotary Food Bank. For more information, please contact the Renton Recycle Events Hotline at 425-430-7398. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at RentonLaw.gov/traffic. All projects, or weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. So next up is audience comment. We do have a couple of people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please provide us with your name, city of residence. And the first up is John, I believe, Verden.
Good evening, my name is John Verden. I am a Renton resident. I read an article on May 17th that you were considering an ordinance to criminalize public drug use. So I wrote an entire page to talk about that. But my follow-up today was that you already passed the ordinance, so I don't have much to talk about. But I still wanted to give you guys some feedback as a community member, as a new member to the city of Renton. I've only lived here for four years. And it's interesting, the differences between where I moved from and the city of Renton. The first, I want to give you a lot of compliments. There are a lot of great things happening in Renton. The Landing is one of my favorite places to go to, with all the great restaurants, Top Golf, the Wine Walk, the festivities, just the entire environment down there. And I think if the Sounders facility comes in, will be another huge win for the city. So congratulations to all you guys for working on that. With growth, as you know, and I feel kinda silly now, because after the presentation, obviously you have a good handle on what's happening in the city. You don't need me to tell you. But again, this is me just expressing my feelings and my comments, because I've never done this before. So it's a good opportunity for me to learn a little bit more about you guys and the city. But with growth and everything that I'm seeing in the development, you know, we worry about crime, we worry about traffic, we worry about development. It's all been addressed tonight so far. I think that adding strong ordinances on the books and laws as we continue to grow as a community and a city is very, very important to me. I'm a big fan of having laws and having a police force and making sure that we have a well-trained police force and a lot of them to enforce these laws and ordinances. I'd like to see, as we continue to grow, I'm gonna kind of repeat myself, but additional ordinances passed as the city grows to protect me and my family more so than the criminals. And I think that's how I've felt over the past few years, is that it feels like the criminals and other, and I don't know a proper term to use on that, but that there's more lenience towards them and not so much more protection for me. And I see a lot of things happening in public. Drug use was one of them that you could see anywhere, so I'm happy to see that we've passed that. Hopefully, we'll enforce it. Is there something that shows how much time I have?
You've got less, you've got about 30 seconds, sir.
Thank you. So the future of Renton is up to all of us. I'm hoping as council members, you're all on board with tougher laws, more police and enforcement of those laws. Otherwise, the people that commit the crimes will continue to take advantage of us, and that's how I feel. It's one thing to just come up here and challenge you guys, and I think you've done a fantastic job. But I am willing to throw my hat in as a volunteer and do anything that I can do for the city. Again, I've only been here for four years, but I'm happy to partake in anything to make the city of Renton a better place and a better community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next up is Marie Roper.
My name is Marie Roper. I'm 79 years old, lived in the city since I was 12. So, Mr. Mayor, this is for you. I live up on the hill. There must be 500 units, apartments going in, in Office Sunset. I want to know what you're gonna do about the crime. I need more policemen. I've got people racing down my streets. Nobody stops at the four-way. The stop signs are demolished all the time. I want to know what you're gonna do about the homeless, about juvenile crime. I mean, we can't keep slapping their hands. A five-year-old knows right from wrong. So a 13-year-old that holds a senior at hostage by a gun, and he doesn't get anything? Excuse me, that is not right. And? What else? What are you gonna do with the homeless? Tell me what you guys have done to deal with the drugs. I mean, we got a lot of them. Every time you turn around, somebody's getting, a senior's down at Fred Meyer getting beat up or robbed. Give me some answers.
This is.
The council too. You're responsible.
This is your time to talk. I will definitely get your information and give you a call.
You want my phone number?
Actually, staff.
You have my phone number. Okay, I want to see results. Otherwise, you gotta step aside and let somebody else deal with it. Okay? Oh, and the park down at VFW. You guys want to make that a park? You should be ashamed of yourself. Those people come to gather. They have no place to park, and you want to make it a park? That's a nice way to say thank you to our veterans. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Okay, next up is Patty Eichsenberger.
Marie just kind of covered what I wanted to talk about, is that I'm concerned about our parking being taken away from us seniors by the VFW on Burnett. We can't be walking up to the public parking place there and walking through the bus place where there are lots of different people there, and I'm afraid I'm gonna get shot. So I would like to see that you don't change our parking or take our parking away from us. It's difficult for us. There's people that are in bad shape, and we only have, what, four, six? Six handicap places there. And we need our parking, so please don't take it away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. John, you're signed up twice, so I think that's a mistake. We're gonna move on. We have a couple of people signed up remotely, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have two people signed up. The first person is Michael Westgard. Michael, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and Council. Thank you for your time. I just want to say, I support rent controls and rent registrations, limited fees and deposit payment options for all renters in the city of Renton and across the state of Washington. Because I recognize that while landowners have cost controls on their property because of Tim Imman's ridiculous property tax cap and 15 and 30-year mortgage terms, renters don't get that benefit. Renters don't always even get told of the limited protections that are currently in place. I also find it illuminating that some of the same council members that were pushing for gross misdemeanors or even felonies for public consumption or illegal disposal now want a white-glove approach for the owners putting our unhoused neighbors on the streets. The city of Renton needs an office funded to enforce a renter-protection ordinance and staff that makes renters aware of their rights so they can have the security and protection. and protection of a roof over their head. Also, in closing, I want to jump to a study that I shared with the council from the San Francisco Federal Reserve that show wage increases have next to no effect on inflation, and I hope this information gets included with the study the city is conducting on the impacts of minimum wage increases while our residents are struggling to make the rent. I appreciate your time and I will see the rest of mine. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the second person that signed on is Jeffrey Lawrence. However, he is not logged in tonight. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. So we are on to the consent agenda. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any that would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move the council concur with the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee has two motions to share with, or two reports to share with you tonight, excuse me.
The Community Services Committee Committee Report, this is regarding adoption of the Renton Parks Commission bylaws. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Renton Parks Commission bylaws and adopt the resolution establishing the bylaws as the commission's document for governing of its members and conducting business. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Rivera.
I move we adopt the resolution as read. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Van, that the proclamation be adopted as read. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next re, excuse me, the next report is regarding adoption of the Renton Senior Citizen Advisory Board bylaws. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Renton Senior Citizen Advisory Board bylaws and adoption of the resolution establishing the bylaws as a board's document for governing of its members and conducting business. This is also signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rivera.
I move that we adopt the committee report as read. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Community Services Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one report to present.
Utilities Committee Committee Report, this is regarding Amendment Number 8 to a contract with RH2 Engineering for replacement of the Highlands 435 Zone Reservoirs and Maines. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number 8 to Contract 16103 with RH2 Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $348,330 for the design of the replacement of the Highlands 435 Zone Reservoirs and Maines. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Alberston.
I move the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has one report to present.
A Transportation Aviation Committee Committee Report, this is regarding proposed speed limit changes. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the recommended speed limit changes as stated below. Streets and limits for this speed limit change. One is Aberdeen Avenue Northeast from Northeast 27th Street to Northeast 28th Place, 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. Northeast 28th Place from Aberdeen Avenue Northeast to its western end, 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. Northeast 28th Street from Aberdeen Avenue Northeast, uh, to, did I, oh, that one's in there twice. So Northeast 28th Street from Aberdeen Avenue Northeast to its eastern end, 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. And Blaine Avenue Northeast from Northeast 28th Street to its eastern end, 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading tonight. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, per our process, this met the threshold of 60% of the residents signed it and requested this and met the other criteria we set forth. So with that, I move approval of the committee report as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Transportation and Aviation Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to legislation. We have two resolutions for adoption and one ordinance for first reading.
All right, the first resolution is regarding the bylaws for the Parks Commission. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, accepting the Parks Commission bylaws.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read. Second. Or I move the resolution be adopted as read, forgive me.
There you go. And you still want to second it?
Second.
Okay, okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Van, that the resolution be adopted as read. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next resolution is regarding the Renton Senior Citizen Advisory Board bylaws. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, approving the Renton Senior Citizen Advisory Board bylaws.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
I move the resolution be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Van, that the resolution be adopted as read. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, so in ordinance, uh, excuse me, the next is the ordinance, and this is regarding the proposed speed limit changes. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 10111 of the Renton Municipal Code Regulations by reducing the speed limit in the vicinity of Aberdeen Avenue Northeast from Northeast 27th Street to Northeast 28th Place, Northeast 28th Place from Aberdeen Avenue Northeast to its western end, Northeast 28th Street from Aberdeen Avenue Northeast to its western end, Northeast 28th Street from Aberdeen Avenue Northeast to its eastern end, and Blaine Avenue Northeast from Northeast 28th Street to its eastern end from 25, uh, to, from 25 to 20 miles per hour, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are on to new business. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, June 12th, 2023, at 4:30 PM in the afternoon, the committee of the whole will be meeting in this council chamber and via video conference. We have one item on the agenda, King County Regional Homeless Authority update. At 5:30 on June 12th, 2023, we will be holding our June 19th reception, which is located in the conferencing center across the hall. And at 7:00 PM on June 12th, Monday, Monday, June 12th, 2023, we will have a, have our regularly scheduled council meeting here in chambers and via video conference. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor, but if I may take a moment for personal interest, I just wanted to say thank you again for the proclamation tonight. I want to say thank you to Lynette Sargent for all that she does in the community. It being Pride Month, I just really particularly, I'm very grateful to live in Renton and to live in Washington in a place where I feel so, like my rights and the rights of my partner are so protected. And we are witnessing an actual violence and hatred vilifying our community, particularly the trans community. And there are a lot of people out there that don't even feel that we are deserving of rights or protections. And so I am just so grateful to have a mayor, and a council, and a city, especially with the number of LGBTQIA youth and families and people that I have had the personal pleasure of meeting. We have a growing community here because we are becoming a safer and safer place for these families to thrive. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, June 12th, the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. There are eight, nope, I'm sorry, 10 items on the agenda, and here we go. Number one, 2023 Juneteenth Celebration Temporary Event Fee Waiver Request. Number two, Maplewood Golf Course Driving Range Used Artificial Turf Purchase. The Dish Wireless LLC Lease Agreement, Agreement with McKinstry Ascension, Ascension, sorry about that, LLC for City of Renton Energy Upgrades Phase 3. The Utility Bill Leak Adjustment Request for RVA Center LLC. Personal Holiday Policy and Procedure Changes for Non-Represented Employees. Local Agency Agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the Sunset Trail Project. The Acceptance of King County Veterans, Seniors and Human Services Levy Funds for the Minor Home Repair Program, Vouchers and Emerging Issues in Finance. Sounds like a long meeting. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
I don't have any new business, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank community members for coming out and commenting and letting us know your concerns. And thank you, Senator Asagawa, for attending our meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I can't keep up with the volume of the Finance Committee, um, the Planning and Development Committee does have a meeting on Monday, June 12th at 3:30 PM. We have three items on the agenda. Comprehensive Plan Update Recommendation, North 30th Street Reason, Docket 18 Expansion and Emerging Issues in CED. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And last up is Councilmember McGurven.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I ran out of stuff to talk about. What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Council President O'Halloran that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay, say no. We're adjourned, thank you.